Okay, good evening. It's 6:00 PM, July 13th, 2022. I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local channel 18. So if we could all rise, we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, does anybody have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, you can check in with Marian. You'll have three minutes to make your comment. Okay, all right, let's move along. I'm going to ask for public comment on each hearing tonight at the end of that presentation. Okay. Associate members Sharon Sanglier and Bob Cagion are absent tonight. So sitting in our first hearing will be our five regular board members. All right, so Charlie, would you read the first new hearing, please?
New hearing, 69 Shoestring Bay Road. Petitioner Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC requests a variance under 174-33 setback from water and wetlands to allow for construction of a single-family residential structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 77, parcel 137, Mashpee, Mass.
Are these all the same?
Yep.
Some have highlights, some don't.
Good evening. For the record, Jack McLean, attorney for Southworth Mashpee Properties at Willow Bend. This is a petition for variance relief for the construction of a single-family home at 69 Shoestring Bay at Willow Bend. The property is under agreement and we're seeking this relief so that we could pursue a building permit. The relief requested is under section 174-33 because of the location of the proposed home within 50 feet of the top of the coastal bank, the town of Mashpee's defined coastal bank, which is shown on the site plan highlighted in red. The home will be located 17 feet at its closest point to the coastal bank, and there'll also be a three-foot retaining wall and a patio behind the home. The retaining wall will be about two and a half feet off the top of the coastal bank. A brief history on the lot. This lot is part of the Shoestring Bay subdivision originally built by George Benway and his partner in the 1980s. And the road, Shoestring Bay Road runs parallel to the bay and to the coastal bank for the dozen or so homes that are all located on that side of the street. The bank is located roughly 50 to 150 feet off of the seaward side of the road, if you will. So the lots are very narrow, and at the time the road was constructed, this particular regulation did not exist. And if you ought to respect the 40-foot frontage setback along Shoestring Bay Road and then the 50-foot setback off the coastal bank, most of these lots will need relief. The subdivision originally consisted of 35 lots. To date, 32 of them have been built. This is one of the three remaining to be built. Lot 69 itself was filled extensively during the construction of the road, which altered the coastal bank in that area again prior. I think the road was constructed prior to the adoption of the Wetlands Act. So it's a very steep bank, but it has grown in over time, is now heavily vegetated and stable. This site plan that you're looking at in front of you was just approved by the Mashpee Conservation Commission at a public hearing last month on June 23rd. They approved the setback of 17 feet as we are requesting relief from this board also. We have not received the actual order of conditions yet, but it was approved with this in place. The hardship, I believe, is created by the unique conditions of the site, including primarily the location, historic location of the road and its proximity to the coastal bank, the historical filling of the site, and as you can see, it's a fairly irregularly shaped lot. You've actually got not only Shoestring Bay Road, but there is Bryant's Cove Road, which is at the top of the site plan, which is an ancient way, but which has been respected for frontage purposes as a setback. So there's also no build zone from the golf course. So it's a unique lot. It's got a few constraints. And, you know, the house has been located so as to minimize impacts to the bank and to, with the conditions imposed by the Conservation Commission, I think that that will be the case. So I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have or details on the plan. The house itself is about 4,500 square feet. This is the only relief that's being requested. The lot coverage is 10.4%, I believe. And, you know, all the other setbacks have been respected.
Do you meet all the side, front, and rear setbacks?
Yes, we do, with the exception of this setback from the coastal bank.
Right.
Where is the lot coverage in the plan?
I'm sorry?
It's on the bottom.
Is the lot coverage proposed, as proposed, on the plan? I see the 20%.
It's on the site.
I can't find it because it's so small.
Bottom left.
Yeah, it's bottom left.
Bottom left.
It's 10.4, and I agree, it's hard to read, but it's 10.4.
So I have a question for you.
Yes.
Thank you.
I believe this is R3, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
So the setback from the road is 40 feet?
Right.
And how far is the setback?
It is setback 40 feet, and with respect to the ancient way, they measure that from the center line, so it's setback 60 feet from that. Sure luck.
Okay.
I can't see the 10.4. I just want to make sure it's on the plan, that's all.
It's on the plan.
It is on the plan.
Somebody show me. I can't find it either.
Bottom left.
Right down here.
It's 3882 square feet, building 3350 patio.
See the zoning table? Do you see the zoning table?
Oh, I see, yeah, 10.4%.
It is very hard to read on the.
Read those first. I apologize for that.
Let me get back to where I was going with this. So you're, how far from the road?
40 feet.
I see, do I see 471 to Shoestring Bay Road?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, and how far are you from Bryant's Cove?
60 feet, which is the requirement that you have to set back from the center line.
Okay, and what's that setback requirement? Is it 60?
No, it's 40. It has to be treated as a road. That's what you were.
Okay. So you're 47 and 60. Is there any reason why you can't move it forward to 40 feet?
This is a plan that was approved by the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
It's outside.
My question's still remit. Is there a reason why you can't move it forward?
I would have to get back to you on that from the engineer. I know they looked at that. Again, there's a lot going on here. There's a pump station and a generator in this location. There's also a gravel path for the golf carts that comes along, so there's a lot going on. I mean, you could not move the house four away from the bank and further without encroaching into the setback from Bryant's Cove Road.
I thought it was 40 feet.
No, it's 60 feet.
You said the requirement, though, is 40.
But it has to be measured from the center line of an undefined way, which is what Bryant's Cove. Bryant's Cove Road is one of our so-called ancient ways.
That's a paper road, right?
So we can't pull away from the bank any further. You know, but it slid this way and got closer to the building that was established by the. You know, I can't speak to that extra seven feet.
Even if they did move it seven feet, they would still need a variance.
Is the limit.
Conservation's happy with what they've asked for. So they're asking for a variance of 33 feet, and to move it seven feet, they'd still be wanting a variance of 26 feet. As far as I'm concerned, if Conservation's happy with 33, I'm okay.
Yeah, to be clear, even if we moved it, we'd still be asking for 33 feet because I think all you could do is slide the whole house to the left. I can't speak to that. I know they've been working on this plan for months. Whether they could cheat and get a few more feet towards the road, I can't answer that standing here tonight.
Is the limit of no build golf re-eeasement self-imposed, meaning is that your easement?
It's not self-imposed. It's imposed by the ownership of the golf course, which is separate from the ownership of the lot.
Because you're tied up against that right now, right?
Yes. The golf course is in place, and there's a tee box located in this area, and for safety purposes, they just didn't want anything.
So you can't.
Any structural.
So if you kept the same footprint and you tried to slide it seven foot forward, it would then slide to the left or facing the house to the right, which means you couldn't slide it seven feet forward. You might be able to slide it three or four feet forward.
Correct. I think that's probably right.
You could never get to seven because of the no build golf easement. I wish you guys gave a little better plan. It's a little, I mean, well-done plan, I'm not questioning that. I'm just saying Inspector Clouseau died years ago.
There's a lot on the plan. I apologize.
No, it's a well-done plan. It's just hard to read. If someone were to make a motion, what is the relief that you are seeking, the amount of?
33 feet.
So the requirement is 50. You're showing 17, and you're seeking 33 in relief, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Dave, any thoughts on this?
I have no issues.
Anybody else?
Did Conservation close their hearing?
Yes, they have approved it, but they haven't issued the actual piece of paper, order of conditions yet as an administrative.
When you say they approved it, what did Drew say that it's all?
No, no, the commission reviewed it. They closed the public hearing. They voted on it. They approved the order of conditions. They just have not issued the piece of paper yet.
We don't have the certificate of conditions yet at the.
An order of conditions, no.
But I presume we have correspondence that reflects what you just said.
Yeah, we'd be happy to accept that as a condition of this board's approval, that, you know, the approval from the Conservation Commission be executed and recorded prior to issuing it's have any building.
There is a comment from Andrew McManus saying 69 Shoestring Bay has been approved by the commission.
Yep, that was from, that was from Drew, right?
That's from Drew.
Any other comments?
There's a, looks to be like a wall on the left-hand side near the garage side. I don't know if that's a wall, a retaining wall, or what is it? I can't tell by the.
There's a retaining wall.
I think it's a path going toward a side entrance.
Is that right there?
Yeah. It's a path because this lot drops quite a bit in the back. So you have a retaining wall to build up that path.
So the height of the wall is two and a half feet above ground?
I believe it's three feet and it's two and a half feet off of the coastal bank, but that is the building.
But the height of the wall is three feet above the ground?
Correct, yeah.
Does that require any railing or anything?
Not according to the building department.
Any issues with that, Dave?
Well, if it's above 30 inches, it would require. If it's above 30 inches and the walkway was in within three feet of the wall, yeah. It needs a handrail. It needs a guardrail, actually. It's not a handrail.
But if there wasn't a walkway, David, it would be four feet, right? I mean, a wall.
You wouldn't need one, yeah, you wouldn't need one if there's no walkway within three feet of the edge of the wall.
Or if it becomes a structural wall, then you'd need.
Then you'd need a wall.
Well, then you'd need inspection.
Yeah.
Playing building wall.
So that should be part of.
Condition.
Any condition law.
Well, I thought we just, all right, so just for clarity's sake, are you saying that 30 inches or less, 29 inches or less, does not require a wall? I mean, a fence?
Doesn't require a guardrail.
A guardrail, okay. So what is the height of that again?
They believe they said it's 30 inches.
I thought you said 36.
That's at the highest point. It's already sloped.
Patio is 30, it says on here, patio 30 inches above grade.
Well, why don't we do it this way? Does the zoning enforcement officer believe that it needs a handrail?
Not by this drawing.
No, we were told no. There's a small pool in the back that has an automatic cover.
For me to question the zoning enforcement officer. It's up to you, though, Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
It's not like a straight retaining wall. It's sloped. So it's at its highest point. I've seen it done with landscape, though. You know, I don't know what David accepts of that, but I've seen where they've blocked off.
Well, the question is, is there going to be a walkway? If there is a walkway.
But then you have height.
Eventually down the road in a year, if they put a walkway in there.
I thought there was a walkway going there.
There is a walkway.
There's a walkway going there already. So, and he's saying that because of the fact that it goes from 30 inches to something less than, he doesn't require.
I think you guys are thinking like it's a patio or a deck.
I'm not thinking anything. I'm asking Dave.
What I think what you're getting at is, I don't think it needs a railing because it's a walkway. It's a retaining wall. If you build a retaining wall, well, the whole back of the house, it's over three feet. They're not going to make you put a railing.
I guess what I'm getting at is.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah, the zoning enforcement officer is saying it doesn't need it.
Within three feet of the edge, you need a, you need a guardrail.
Why don't we let, so he'll be doing inspection at the house. I don't want, it's up to you, Mr. Chairman, but I would rather not condition something than in fact he's out doing inspection and doesn't require it, and now he's caught up in a situation where I just conditioned it with two included railing when it doesn't need one.
Yeah, I don't think we have to. I think it's a non-issue.
If he thinks he needs it, he's going to require it on his inspection. I just don't want to burden.
You have no issue with?
No, it's one of them things, until it's built, you won't, you won't make that determination until it's built.
So on inspection, you can say you need a guardrail.
Or, you know, move the walkway.
I'll move the walkway, right.
So have you done a title on Bryant's Cove Road?
Yes.
To understand what rights are on Bryant's Cove Road?
There are public rights in Bryant's Cove Road. Willow Bend has four or five ancient ways that run in various places through it, including Bryant's Cove Road, Simons Road, Quipish Road. And very early on in the project approval process, those are all deemed to be public ways, meaning that they are open to the public and they are all marked on the property, and people have the right to access them. Bryant's Cove Road goes across here, and then you'd have to know the property. Then it goes up into the Spinnaker subdivision, Spinnaker Street up there, goes off of our property, and then goes all the way down to the other end of Shoestring Bay Road. It exits there, and then it goes all the way down to Half Tide Marina, whatever it's called today.
The only reason why I'm raising the issue is because of setback to that road. There's no setback on the plan shown to the road, and it could be considered a public way, and if it's considered.
Yeah, that's why we do setback for frontage. We treat it, the 60 feet there, so that's.
I'm missing that 60-foot distance from that road. Because that will answer my question.
60-foot setback with Bryant's Cove Road.
It's written in front.
Oh, I see. There's no line, arrow, or distance. It's in writing. Ah, okay, I'm fine. That's the only reason I brought it up.
It's an undefined. It's just a dirt path. It's probably 15 feet wide. People still use it occasionally for walking dogs, or occasionally you'll see a horse out there.
Okay, are there any other comments?
So Board of Health comment for the record here.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, 69 Shoestring Bay Road, Board of Health. Property is connected to Willow Bend wastewater treatment plant. No comments.
Okay.
David already read it. Don't take it.
Yep. Anybody else on the board? Anybody in the audience have any comments on this? Okay, you see none. Ron, would you like to make a motion on this?
I would love to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a variance under section 174-33 setback in water and wetlands to Southworth Mashpee Properties of 69 Shoestring Bay Road. Said variances allow for construction of a single-family residence structure on a property located in an R3 zoning district, map 77, parcel 137, Mashpee, Mass. With following conditions. One, Board is determined the applicant meets all the conditions of a variance under Master General laws, section 48, 48, section 10. Site plan, proposed residence 69 Shoestring Bay Road, Mashpee, Mass. Prepared for Kerry Leslier. Date, June 3rd, 2022, scale 1 inch, 10 feet, drawn by J K L Job, number 2021-055, prepared by Baxter and I Engineering and survey sheet C3-0. Number three, the Board issues a variance setback in wetlands in the amount of, the relief sought is 33 feet, so depicted on the plan is 17 feet. Total required is 50 feet. So for clarity reasons, again, total required is 50, shown on the plan is 17, so the total relief is 33. Number four, condition an all-talent, comments right into the record, including but not limited to Conservation.
Okay, do we have a second? All right, Jim, seconds. Let's do a rule called vote. Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Thank you. All right. Okay, Charlie, would you read the next new hearing?
Okay, the second new hearing, 19 Mercantile Way. Petitioner Capewide Construction requests a special permit under section 174-25 G4, G5, G6, 174-25, G14, 174-25, G18, and 174-45.6 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a 7,272-square-foot metal building with contractor bays to be used for cabinet-making with accessory storage, office, showroom, retail, and paint booth on property located in an I1 and light industry overlay zoning district, map 88, parcel 105, Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain for the applicant Capewide Construction. With me tonight are Roger Brooks from Capewide Construction, and also John LaValle from Baxter 9. Baxter 9, so any technical questions, they are here to answer as well. As has been read into the record, the property is located at 19 Mercantile Way. We're located in the I1 and light, the I1 district, as well as the light industrial overlay district. What we're proposing tonight is, again, the buildings that you've seen many times that have been built on this road, Mercantile, your typical Morton-style metal building. We're on a 44,516-square-foot lot. We have 200 feet of frontage. The footprint of the building is 7,272 square feet. There is a mezzanine proposed, so there is a revision that's going to need to be made to the plan. The floor plan that's shown with the mezzanine is a little bigger than what the building code defines as a mezzanine. A mezzanine can only be one-third of the underlying floor area. We're just over that, so we are going to revise the plans to shrink that to make sure that it meets the building code requirement of the mezzanine. So I would simply just ask that if the board were to approve the project, that it would just condition that revised plan to show it as a mezzanine.
Could you do me a favor and state exactly what you're going to do in reference to the plan?
Yes.
For someone to, was to make a motion?
Yes, so if you're looking at the floor plan that Capewide did, the, what's shown as the mezzanine is 2,419 square feet. Okay, that's slightly larger than a third of the underlying total floor areas or the base floor area. So that doesn't meet, it's bigger than what's defined, what the building code defines as a mezzanine. So what we're going to do is submit a revised floor plan with the mezzanine as a 2,349 square feet, and then it will meet the definition of a mezzanine under the building code.
So you're going to revise the plan to depict 2,349 square feet for the mezzanine?
Correct.
And it exists on the plan, depicted as of right now as what?
2,419 square feet.
2,409?
Okay, looking at this plan, where is the mezzanine? It's interior, right?
Correct.
Okay, I'm looking at the interior, and I see.
Okay, I'm looking at the interior and I see that, okay, there it is, storage mezzanine.
Dash line.
Yep. They're going to make that smaller.
We're going to make it smaller because the building, building code defines a mezzanine as one-third of the floor area. The, what's depicted on the plan is slightly larger than a third, so we need to decrease that to make sure it meets the definition. So again, go from 2,419 as shown on the plan you have to a revised plan of 2,349 square feet. Correct.
Is what they're going to revise it to?
Correct. It doesn't impact...
So the mezzanine, in other words, it's off the ground?
That is correct, that is correct.
What's underneath it?
Uh, just the, the floor, the floor area. It's basically, yeah, it's, correct.
And I don't see any stairs going up there.
Uh, Roger Brooks from Capewide Construction.
Yeah, just grabbing the mic.
The owner hasn't quite determined how they're going to use that space. They're going to use this, uh, building as a showroom in a cabinet-making facility. Um, they haven't quite decided how they'll access that, but there will be a stair within the footprint of the mezzanine. They're not quite sure where it will be, but there will be a stair that meets, uh, the requirements for a stair. Probably a little bit wider as they'll want to be carrying things up and down.
Thank you. So I have a question right off the bat.
Yes.
And I'm, I see extensive notes from plan review here, two pages.
Yes.
In fact, maybe three, maybe four. In any event, um, are you trying to get the building approved and what's going in there at the same time?
That's correct. We're asking for the building and the uses.
Okay, is that, was that brought up during this meeting?
Yes, yep, if you look at the, uh, I'll pull the plan, plan review application. Yep, so the, um, the plan review application requested the, uh, the contractor bay, the wholesale business and storage and roof structure, the furniture making, and accessory use is complementary to the principal business.
Okay, and the principal business is?
The contract, so the ultimate purchaser of this property, should this project be approved by this board, is Greg Clancy Construction. So what he's going to be using this building for is his cabinetry-making portion of the, uh, of his business.
Okay, so what is he, is he a cabinet maker?
Well, he's a general contractor, he builds houses, he does everything.
He's a home builder.
Yeah, he's a home builder, right.
Okay, so he's not, he doesn't, he doesn't sell furniture now, does he?
Well, I mean, he does, he makes his own cabin, so when he builds a house, if somebody does a kitchen remodel, he manufactures all his cabinetry.
So he's, he's been doing this for a while?
I believe so, I believe Greg's been around for a long time.
They have a shop now, but they're renting space, so they're looking to have their own space.
Right.
Have the conditions of the site plan, uh, plan review committee all been dealt with on that plan?
As far as I know, they have, yes, because there was questions about, uh, it's being sprinkled, we, uh, there was talk about the paint booth, we included that on this plan, uh, that's been all approved by the fire department, the variance has been approved by, uh, to put the septic underneath the, uh, the, the road, uh, the parking areas, that's all been approved by Board of Health.
So things like, so on plan review, one of them, subsurface drainage should be added to the reanimation base.
Right.
So have you gone back to plan review and shown them the revised plans and they've said, yes, you have dealt with them?
We, I don't, we didn't resubmit up to...
I'm, I'm trying to understand the papers, totally blank.
Yeah.
And you've been in front of the board before, trust you, it's not a question of that. But how do we understand as a board that everything that was conditioned on this site plan review process that's in this document, because they haven't said stamping approval, you did it all, we now approve the process, we approve your plan, and not everything included in this document was done? How am I assured that that took place other than you telling me that?
Oh, I could, I'm happy, we have, you know, as I say, we have the experts who, John LaValle from Baxter and I, he was at the plan review hearing, he's the one who's added the, anything to deal with the plan, anything to deal with the variances, you know, he's certainly here to answer any of those questions, he can show you on the plans where they exist.
We were kind of looking for something from a town official saying, all done.
It's not mistrust of you, I just, you know, I need to understand that somebody in between the, the knowledge of this board and the knowledge of the site plan review committee who conditioned this application, somebody has said yay to the plans, and I certainly, um, have not reviewed them, and even if I did, I'm not sure if I have the expertise to say yay and nay to these conditions.
Right. I mean, the, as you know, the plan review is made up of various, you know, department heads, I mean, we didn't resubmit, I don't think I've ever resubmitted the, uh, they didn't ask for us to resubmit it, they just asked us to put those on the plan, you know, I don't know, you know, Board of Health obviously gave comments to the, um, to the revised plans and the variances, if Board of Health had any problems with the comments from plan review, I would assume that they would have, uh, noted those in their comments to, to this board for this, tonight's hearing, you know, if the fire department or the conservation or any of the, you know, those things that were still outstanding that were not on the revised plans, they would have noted those in the comments to this board for tonight's hearing.
At, at the bottom of page three, though, it lists, the motion that Mr. Harrington made relative to the approval of eight, of, uh, 19 Mercantile Way, you know, lists one, two, three, four, five, six different conditions, I guess, that are part of the approval process of the board. Now, the planning, the plan review committee approved it.
Correct.
But it looked like there were still things yet to be done or to be agreed.
I'd have to see, I don't know.
And if I can add to that, if I may.
Yeah.
Ms. Laurent mentioned that the parking area, parking is currently based on just the warehouse.
So that's been revised, so the plan that we're showing you now has warehouse and retail space.
Yeah, but, so I'm just saying, the document in front of me, the plan review, says that the parking is just for the warehouse.
Correct, and we've revised the plan to show. So if you look at the parking requirements, it shows...
Cause now it changed after the part we made, so.
No, I, I get it, man.
Uh, sorry, warehouse and office were the two issues, so originally it was warehouse, so we've given you the office calculations to reflect that we need to increase the parking.
Okay, now what about retail? There's going to be retail space and a showroom. What about spaces for that?
Uh, the showroom isn't, uh, isn't a defined parking, so there's no...
How do I know that?
Well, cause it's in your bylaw, I don't think...
No, how do I know that, yeah, people aren't coming in there all the time? And of course, we'll need parking spaces.
Right, but it, the bylaw has specific calculations for how you define parking.
Exactly.
So we've done that based on the office and the, uh, the warehouse space.
Okay, what about for retail?
I don't know.
What's required for retail?
Well, they even mentioned the ZBA in this document, I just, I'm...
Right. I mean, we're not showing any retail space, so there's...
On this plan, it says you're going to have a showroom, you're going to have retail sales. And then the industrial district, retail is not allowed as a primary use.
Correct, so what we're, what we're...
So the question is...
What we're asking for is the retail is an allowed use under the light industrial overlay district as a complementary use to the principal use. So if you, if you look at 140, that's why I asked for the relief under the, that, uh, bylaw, let me just pull it up. So if you look at the light industrial overlay district, section D, it says accessory uses. A mix of uses will be allowed so long as the permitting authority finds that the accessory use is complementary to the principal business, and is not detrimental to the area. Accessory uses shall include the following: retail sales and services clearly secondary to the principal business.
I see another one, Chris, it says, Mr. Phelan said, if the showroom, showroom is in the front, it makes more sense for public safety, agreed, but since the showroom doesn't exist now, how do you explain that to the ZBA?
Well, the show, the showroom's shown on the plan, the floor plan.
But I presume, so it wasn't shown to them?
I don't know if the showroom was...
The plan was revised after...
To show the showroom.
So Mr. Phelan has not seen this, is that correct, your new plan?
Uh, I don't believe so, but he would have to in order to sign off for a building.
Right. And he would have seen it, I think, for the...
I don't think he, well, because he's a part of the fire department, he may. Fire prevention. Yeah, but I'm just saying that members of this board, meaning the plan review board, um, would not have to see this decision prior to the building inspector, unless the building, the zoning enforcement officer slash building inspector chooses to do that, I don't think it's a requirement per se. I just, I, there's a hole here, and I'm not blaming you for the hole, there's a hole in the process, right?
Right, I mean, the, the plan review and site, design and site plan are advisory boards, you know, they're not, they don't...
But this board ultimately makes a, so I make a motion...
Based on what they said.
Correct.
Based on what they're saying, for me to make a...
These are all the town boards, the head of all these departments.
Correct, that's correct.
If the chairman asks me to make a motion, which he generally does, I have not read this document to the degree, I've scanned it, and I was prepared for this statement today, tonight, and that is, I'm not able to make a motion if asked to do so, that would cover everything included in the plan review, other than to say, subject to plan review, and some of those things may be, um, not in this board's, um, would not be in this board's, um, willingness to approve, let's say that.
Right.
I'm not saying they are, they aren't, I have no right, I'm only one member, but I'm just saying that there's a lot to this, to this document, that I believe this board should take a very close look at before a motion's made by me to approve or disapprove, uh, sub to even this document.
Right.
There's so many things in it.
Well, I mean, just taking, for instance, it's number two, the leaching area underneath the paved parking requires a Title V variance and the variance be requested on the plan. Well, we've gone through that process and we've gotten the Board of Health variance. And again, if Board of Health would have commented if it's still, if it was still outstanding, um...
So, but look at the fourth one, the parking be, it's not grammar, grammar right, correct, but the parking be determined by the zoning board of appeals if it should be on the side or in the front of the building?
Well, that's, you're the zoning...
We're supposed to make that decision.
That's yours.
But this board didn't even know that unless they read this specifically and read that line.
Well, also, the, the plan that we've submitted...
They didn't know we had to make that decision.
Well, the plan, the plan that we submitted shows the parking on the front and the side.
But it's not in the application.
But it's specifically on the plan review saying that we should be making that decision, and I'm saying to you that I read that, I understand that, the rest of the board may not understand that, so they looked at it specifically and in their minds said, we want it the front, the side, or both. So I'm saying it's, there's a lot to this document that needs to be digested and understood and, and, and decided.
Well, I mean, as I say, I can only, I mean, that's what the process is, we go before design and site plan, they submit, I, I don't know when you get those comments, but at some point you get the comments from, you know, and again, they approve the project with the conditions.
I mean, Capewide's done a great job in this community, done a great job in front of the board, so I, you know, I'm not trying to create problems because he's done a great job, and I trust him, believe in the guy, and I trust you, but, but I got to tell you, I don't, I'm not so sure I can, I'm, I'm sure, I'm not so sure I can vote in favor of a motion if I'm asked to make it, I'm not so sure I'm going to vote in favor of it because of this.
Well, I'm not sure, other than going line by line and showing you where these things are on the plan, I'm not sure how you...
I'm not so sure this board has the ability to say line by line if they're, if they're in what the plan review's, uh, expectations were.
Well, I, I mean, again, you condition things on, you know, the Board of Health making, you know, as I say, the Title V and the variance, that's, that's not your purview, if, if there was something outstanding that the Board of Health would condition that on, you'd approve it with saying that you need to get all Board of Health approvals.
I think that's much easier to make a condition subject to a Board of Health approval than to be conditioned upon all, all, uh, statements made in the plan review document dated da-da-da-da, when in fact they're relying on us to make decisions. In the document itself, it says the ZBA will make these decisions, and yet I'm going back and making a motion possibly that says, subject to this, this document, but in the document it says, we're making decisions.
Um, I guess I'm not sure how you rectify that, I mean, I mean, they've, they, we've given you a plan that shows the parking on the side and the front, we're asking you to approve that, it would be no different than any other project that comes before you with parking on the side and the, and the front, I'm not sure, I understand what the concern is about that parking issue.
Well, I, listen, and I don't, when plan review specifically brings that issue up, and it's right on one of their line item issues, okay, it says, and I, I don't even need to read it, the bottom line is, is they want us to make that decision, whether it's on the front or the side.
Correct.
Specifically in this document.
Correct.
All right, board, you got to make a decision, you want the parking in the front or the side?
But who else would make that decision?
Well, I mean, I think you should make the decision with the, the site plan review, I don't, as one member...
Evan says, has a line here, Evan said that it's up to us, he said, Mr. Lehrer said there's no issue with the location, parking, that would be a discussion with the Board of Appeals, the question is, is this...
Right, you're not supposed to park in front of the plan review.
All right, so that's the case.
It's part of the deal.
So if he doesn't want parking in front, the plan's incorrect by one member, chairman.
Can I make a, when, when you, when you appear before the, uh, the plan review committee, now, it indicates that the meeting was May 17th.
Correct.
All right, the date of the plan is April 25th, the date of the plans that we have here. So are these the plans that, that...
No, there should have been a revised set of plans that was submitted with, maybe... May 13th.
Do they say, is there revision date?
So this was a...
Yeah, it says May 31st.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that on my...
I believe so, okay.
May 17th meeting, and Mr. Harrington said that it was communicated that there will be no painting. So has that changed since this meeting?
That has, we, that was specifically discussed.
So a lot of things have changed since this meeting?
Correct. So it says there's no painting with the building, at that point, we were not planning on painting, except if there is future painting in the building, that they reapply for additional permitting. There really isn't any additional permitting, other than the fact that we've gone before the, you know, asking you under the light industrial overlay district to add that as far as a accessory use. It's also been reviewed by the fire department, really the only other permitting for a paint booth is, is the, and the health department, is the fire department and the health department.
So there is or isn't painting in the building?
There is.
And I would imagine there would have to be with, with a cabinet shop.
Right, yeah, and when we were before site plan review, that wasn't proposed on the plan, it was decided, and they may have come back at a later date to do that, but they decided to do it all at once, get everything on the plan and do it now. And again, the only, the only relief you need for the paint booth is Board of Health and, and, um, and the fire department, and we've gotten those approvals.
Look, Chris, I don't understand, you're saying you got those approved, we have a piece of paper that says that it's not, that there's no painting in the building. You see, there's a disconnect here, and it, it's not one item that I can condition in a, in a, in a motion, and as you know, and I've made a lot of motions, I don't know how to, I do not physically know or mentally, or I don't have the ability to make a motion based on this document.
Yeah, I can't.
Again, I mean, I guess, did Board of Health make any, I didn't see the comments, so...
Yeah, they did.
Was Board of Health make any comment about the paint booth? I mean, they've seen the plan with the paint booth.
I, I don't know, I have not looked at that.
Let me read it, uh, 19 Mercantile Way, Board of Health. On June 16th, 2022, the Board of Health approved the site and septic plan to include the Title V variance of the soil absorption system below the parking area, with a condition that the standard commercial property conditions apply to the property. On June 30th, 2022, the Board of Health approved the paint booth as a noisy trade with the conditions that, one, should in a butter or the public be impacted by a confirmed nuisance from this facility, the board will take action that may include a cease and desist order, revocation of the site assignment of the noisy trade, and/or orders to evade the nuisance. Two, that the exhaust stack be a minimum of 40 feet above grade, 10 feet above the roof peak, and three, that the Board of Health review the manufacturer specs for the actual selected paint booth prior to installation.
So those would be the conditions that I would ask, as opposed to what's been written on the, um, the site plan design review. I mean, you have the comments from Board of Health post, as requested, so in the building that they reapply for additional permitting, which we've done, and you've gotten the approved, the Board of Health sign off with conditions. So again, I would suggest that those are the conditions that would be part of this decision if the board were to approve the project.
So your position is that we approve the parking in the area where it's shown on the plan?
That is correct.
And that is all that we approved?
No, no, you...
Or subject to the conditions that are already in existence?
That's what it seems to me, that's what it seems to me.
We're approving this, we're approving the whole application, the building, you name it, we're approving the whole application.
Correct.
And in doing so, even if you include this document, is reference made to the ZBA making decisions, and Jonathan just said he does, I'm not speaking for Jonathan, and maybe you, maybe I didn't hear it correctly, that he doesn't like parking in the front of a building.
It's not allowed.
So if that's the case, Gregory, it was shown, it's shown on front of the, in front of the building.
Correct, and that's why the relief is being requested from the board. Correct, and that's why the relief is being requested from the board.
Well, okay, I see that, and that's why the document says, and it's buried in the document, the Z B A should make that decision.
Correct.
Which we have granted in many other cases. I, and I am aware of that.
And the reason that, as you-
That is just, but I'm just, I'm only saying that, and I'm, this document carries a lot of issues that are buried in this document that are, that need to be dealt with by this board. It isn't this simple. In the past, the, the plan review committee has said, you know, change these two things, or change this one thing. They haven't even mentioned the Z B A, they send us their, their decision, but this has got like four or five different places that mention Z B A and decisions that need to be made by the Z B A, and now we have plans that are not matching up to some of these decisions, and so I'm, it's different than most.
Let me, let me say something. I'm not comfortable with this right now.
Okay.
I'd like to see this continued for a couple of weeks, I wanna see another set of eyes looking at this such as town council, maybe back to the members of the plan review committee.
Plan review. I mean, I guess I-
There's too many open unanswered questions, because right now, if you'd asked me to vote for it, I would not vote for it.
Okay.
John, can I add something? If we look at page three of the, of the plan review committee, okay, and the motion that, that Mr. Harrington made, one, subsurface drainage be added to the retention basement, that's covered under the Board of Health comment, if I'm not mistaken, am I correct?
It is.
All right. Two, the leaching area underneath the paved parking requires a Title V variance and the variance be requested on the plan. I believe that's also taken care of under the Board of Health, is it not?
Yes.
Number three, the site and septic plan will be submitted for a meeting with the Board of Health for approval, and apparently that was done as far as the Board of Health approval, am I correct?
Correct.
Now, let's look at the next thing. The parking be determined by the zoning board of appeals if it should be on the side or in front of the building. Right now, that's an issue before us.
That is correct.
A revised plan was requested for an alternative parking plan. Again, that's what you've done with the revised plan.
That's what we submitted for approval.
All right, the last thing, that there is no painting within the building except if there is a future painting in the building that they reapply for additional permitting. I don't know whether that's covered under the Board of Health or not, but I think they mentioned the, the issue of painting and noisome orders and all of that stuff.
Right. Yeah, their comments approve the paint booth with the cer, with certain conditions.
So, if, if we look at, if we look at the planning, the plan review committee, according to them, the Board of Health is taking care of, according to these two documents, the Board of Health is taking care of everything except for the determination as to parking.
Correct. So, I don't know that, you know, to go back to town council seems to be-
But I think you gotta look three paragraphs above them. So, you gotta, Charlie, if you could, please, look at where it says, Ms. Laurent mentioned that the park is going based on just a warehouse. Look at the next one, Mr. Phelan, in reference to the showroom, and that has to be dealt with by Z B A. Look at, Ms. Crane said he would rather apply to Z B A just once for all the requests he uses than having to return several other times. I get that.
I do.
I understand why you're trying to do that, makes sense, right? But I'm just saying that this document, so there's more embedded in this document than what's, what's shown in those four different lines.
Right. That, that is not the conclusion of what's above.
Exactly right. And that's why I'm saying that we should minimally, for me, and to really get into depth in this and maybe make a couple of phone calls if that's what it takes, G the Drew or, can't call Chris Gallagher anymore because he doesn't work for the town.
I understand you can't call-
But we don't have a town engineer anymore.
Glenn Harrington anymore either.
Yeah, I know, so, so there's some problems there, right? We can certainly talk to our town planner, so we're, we do have some issues because some of the people that find to this no longer work.
Right, but I, again, I think, as Charlie suggested, I understand that there's comments above, but ultimately the conditions are what, are what is important, it's the conditions. So, regardless of what was said above, the conditions are what we need to satisfy. It's not the, you know, Mr. Harrington said that was communicated that there'll be no painting, that will be one of the conditions, and should that change, they'll have to come back for further permitting, which we've done. The comments from Board of Health tell you that we've done it.
Okay.
So, I'm not, I guess I, I just, I'm, I'm unsure as what the board is looking for from us for further review of the project. The only thing that is unsatisfied per these conditions is the board's determination of the parking.
Well, as one member, I'm not against the application, I'm in favor of the application. I'm more than willing to, to vote in favor of the application once all, you know, the I's are dotted and T's crossed. And I'm concerned that this document and that plan needs more time and effort from this board and others, specifically interaction between this board and plan review and/or members of plan review to understand what we need to do to make sure this thing is 100% or as close to it to as possible.
I am in agreement with everything that Ron just said, and I think we need a little bit of time to take a look at checking out with the other departments just to be on firm ground. I'm in total favor of this, but I wanna make sure that we're on firm ground.
Sure. Okay, I'm, that's fair enough.
Let me also say one thing. A number of years ago, a auto body construction company was proposed to come into this industrial park, that ended up in court.
Right.
They ended up saying, forget Mashpee, and it was all because of the painting.
Right.
And there were all sorts of stuff that was presented, this is the type of filtering system, this, that, and the other thing, in great detail.
Oh, yeah.
I haven't seen any of that.
But Board of Health has reviewed it.
Right, I mean, we submitted all that to the Board of Health as was required. I mean, we're happy to, we'll submit it to this board as well.
Yeah, but it was submitted to us too. I, I haven't seen any of that.
I don't think we, I, I really don't think we need to see that, I think if Board of Health has seen everything-
It was just a special permit.
I could hear, and Board of Health has reviewed it and they've given us their opinion on the, on the paint booth.
Right. I mean, Board of Health has approved the paint booth.
I just don't know what, who we are to, to rule against.
I mean, I'm happy to, I mean, we can certainly submit it, I'm not, I don't have any opposition to submitting it.
I haven't.
I just don't think that-
I'm just not comfortable.
You know, as I say, I just, you know, Board of Health has approved the paint booth and they're the ones who have the jurisdiction over the paint booth.
And they made it, and they made it very clear, if it becomes a nuisance, there'll be a cease and desist-
Correct.
And further action will be taken by the Board of Health.
Again, being tried, but I think I need to be, I'm, I'm in favor of this, I think it's a great project, I think it's a great tax producing project for this community, I think it can be a, you know, and I think the applicant, I know the applicant's done a great job in this community, you've done a great presentation, I just think that from one member's standpoint, this should be done, this should match up to that and that, whatever questions are buried in this document, this board should know what they are, answer those questions in its best ability, and if its ability is lacking in those areas, we should reach out to other people, obtain input from those people, and then give the input. And I think there's a couple of items in here that we need additional help for.
Okay.
And at that, and we should take it upon ourselves to gain that help if we need that help within, between now and the next meeting, if that's what it's, it's rescheduled for, and get this thing done. And frankly, I'm prepared to do that, and if it requires meeting with plan review or whoever's on this list, meaning Laurent or everyone else, I'll do what I need to do or the chairman or whatever, but I just think we need that week or two, whatever it is, to, to, to bring this thing over the finish line and make sure that everybody's protected and the, and the community has a great project and we know you'll build it great and all that other stuff.
Sure.
And I'm not saying that just to say it, I mean what I said.
Right. No, I appreciate that.
Unfortunately, I think that plan review meeting, you were away, and I was unavailable because of COVID.
The most plan review not designed.
Right.
Yeah, it was design view.
I think we had two, I think there was two people, two people at the-
I think it's in everybody's best interest to do what this is, everybody.
But design review was, was not looking, was only looking at other things.
The architectural, right, correct.
Architecture.
Yes.
Right, right.
We weren't even talking about what was actually gonna go in the building.
Mr. Chairman, is the zoning board of appeals looking for continuation of this?
If I could just ask one question before that, please? Just to pursue an end to this, we probably as a board should figure out who's gonna to handle getting some of the answers to these issues, questions?
Well, I'd like to see everybody on plan review, look at the new plans and give comments.
Okay.
And update everything on that list, including parking.
Can I, can I just read one comment, I don't think it was read that Chief Phelan made?
Sure.
He said the showroom is in the front, it makes more-
I read that.
Did you?
Yes.
Come on, where, where were you?
I was zoned out. But, but the one, the point is, it is on the plan now.
I, I understand that.
Correct.
I, I get, that's one of the one that, that I, that I, that I read and I understand is on the plan, but there are others that aren't.
I'm concerned about the number of parking spots and how that's calculated. I wanna make sure that's correct, 'cause as we know, we have issues in town with different areas that do not have enough parking, or it seems that way.
Well, we'll take, we'll take another look at the, the plan to revise, as I say, the, the plan that shows now is parking for warehouse and office, if we need to explore, you know, the retail space will, you know-
Can you come back in two weeks?
Yes.
So, are you hereby requesting an extension?
I'm requesting a continuous the next meeting, which I think is the 27th, which I will be here for anyways.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the applicant's request for an extension until-
What was it again? July 27th.
July 27th.
Okay.
Okay, uh, how do you vote, Jim?
Yes.
Scott? Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you, thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you. Well. Do you want all this stuff back, right?
All right, that's gonna be saved.
Well, my point was-
Saved.
Yep, we're gonna switch one applicant before you.
Yeah, nice.
Okay. Yeah.
I got a, I got an extra.
So, you're not coming back?
No.
Seventy-one bluff?
No. I'm sure you can handle that well.
All right, take them.
Somebody else can make them, I'll see.
This is gonna be information only, all right? Oh, wait a minute, we're doing, we're doing seventy-one bluff first.
Go first.
Do you wanna do that? A change.
Sit down.
Is it quick?
He was walking up here, well, I was walking out.
Coming in line.
So, Charlie, we're gonna do seventy-one bluff, you can put these out, please.
Yes, there is, it's further down, it's in other business.
This I think is all right.
Board to vote on revised site plan. Hey, Dave, how you doing? Good.
Thank you.
Yep. All right.
I don't know how many. Do these all seem the same?
Did you see?
There's only three copies, sorry.
Did you?
How are you, young man?
Good, good. How's everybody doing tonight?
How's the beard going?
Yeah, nice, yeah.
I can tell.
Everybody likes it.
That's true. Are these all the same?
Yes, there's three copies.
Of the same document?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Okay, Charlie, would you read other business? Seventy-one bluff.
Other business, seventy-one bluff avenue, the board to vote on the revised site plan is requested.
Hi.
All right, good evening, everybody, Steve Cook from Katua Bay Design representing Daniel and Kate Wong at seventy-one Bluff Ave. I'm sorry I missed the last meeting, and I know the board requested a new site plan with the update and we have provided that. The note is highlighted in yellow, it's just a new second floor, nothing on the property changes, lot coverage doesn't change, footprint setbacks, nothing changes, we're just gonna take the roof off and put a whole new roof on, I think that's what the board voted for, for approval in the last hearing.
What was the issue?
Uh, we had no-
The, the plan was submitted, was, had some hand notes on it, was an older plan from nineteen ninety-three, I believe.
Oh.
Yeah.
This is far more accurate.
So, they, I presume went to you to draft this plan?
Correct, yep, yeah, I had a survey and we developed a brand new plan that shows-
So, there would not be a revision or revision date on this plan because it's the original plan that you've done?
Correct, yep, yep.
Dave, gives us setbacks on sidelines.
Yeah.
Which was really kind of missing on, a lot of it was missing.
Was height an issue on this one?
No.
No. No, I think it was just a setback.
It's in the existing space. I think the old, the old plan had a balcony that was, that was in, that was coming off, so-
Right.
That I forgot to mark off in the original.
Dave, you've seen this, correct?
Yes.
Any issues?
I have none.
It's good with me.
I don't see any.
Ron, would you like to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we accept into the record the site plan prepared by-
Ron, excuse me, there's one Board of Health comment you might, you may-
I was just asked to make a motion, Charlie.
I know that. Seventy-one bluff avenue, Board of Health, this property is in a zone two and is restricted to the three existing bedrooms, the system was upgraded in December twenty twenty-one and a C O C was issued, so a septic inspection is not required. The addition of any heated room that is seventy square feet or more would be required to have a six-foot cased opening to eliminate the privacy, otherwise it would meet the definition of a bedroom and would be considered an increase in flow.
So, I'm gonna have to condition the motion on that.
Um, sure, yeah, the plan, the plans-
Are you doing, are you doing the final plans?
Yeah, they're already been submitted, yeah, yeah.
I don't have a copy of those.
I don't either.
You, you voted on, you voted on that, those plans.
So, why are we getting, why are we getting Board of Health comment late? I should've come.
They must've just looked at it again at the minute.
Wasn't that, though, that was included in the beginning application? I remember that, and that was in the original application.
And I thought we had, I thought we had resolved that, didn't we?
We did.
Yeah.
Does this affect anything on the plan?
No, it does not.
This comment?
No. This is just a, a new site plan that this board requested.
And that comment is specifically dealt with on your floor.
Correct, yeah, which was voted on in previous hearing.
And there's no issue?
Wait, just a clarification for me. Was there any addition, is this, any additions going on this property? Or is this a renovation?
Just taking off the existing low-pitch roof and putting in a second.
Because it's over twenty-five percent, so I just wanted to make sure.
No, we ruled that last.
Okay.
Ron, you can still condition it with those comments because we hear that it does not affect. Charlie, could you pass those?
I think it might fall to it. Pass this along. I'll make it easy for you to make them.
Thank you, Charlie.
Okay. Want me to make a motion?
Please.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept into the record a site plan issued by Warwick and Associates Inc., sixty-three County Road, Box eight oh three North Falmouth Mash, oh two five five six, zero two five five six. Said site plan is done for Daniel and Kate Wong at seventy-one Buff Avenue, Bluff Avenue. It is dated June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, scale one inch equals ten feet. Also, like, in reference to motion, the motion, I'd like to also make specific reference to a Board of Health comment dated February, July, Wednesday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, where in that comment by the Board of Health, it states that this property is in Zone Two and is restricted to a three bedrooms, three existing bedrooms. The system was upgraded in December twenty twenty-one, and a COC was issued, so a septic inspection is not required. The addition of any heated room that is seventy square feet or more would be required to have a six-foot cased opening to eliminate the privacy, otherwise it would meet the definition of a bedroom and would be considered an increase in flow.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Jim seconds, let's do a roll call. Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to see everybody, have a good evening.
Enjoy, enjoy.
Take care.
Pass that down to Mary.
See ya.
See ya.
Bye, Ron.
Good job, have a great night. Here's all the dead trees.
Take care, Ron.
See you, Ron.
See you, guys.
And Monica's one of these days.
Thank you for those, enjoy David.
Okay. All right, Charlie, would you read the first other business?
Excuse me. Other business. Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership, MCLP, and Jobs Whiting Trust, JWT, will present to begin the administrative review process of Phase One B dash one D in accordance with Section Four, Decision and Conditions of the Chapter Forty-B Comprehensive Permit.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Tom Ferranti. I am here representing Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership and Jobs Whiting Trust. And as was just read into the record, we are here tonight to begin the review process, the administrative review process associated with the completion of Phase One in accordance with the decisions and conditions. With me tonight is Jeremy Lake from Union Studio Architecture, Jack Dolly from Northland Residential, and Sarah Chase from Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership. In addition to Mashpee Commons, Northland, and Union Studio, there are two other members of our team that aren't able to be here tonight. The first is Brian Kuchar and Horsley Witten. They were the civil engineer from the previous exercise back in two thousand thirteen and fourteen, when we, when we advanced Phase One and Phase One A. They'll be continuing the civil engineering exercise for this. And Alan Ockman from Ryan Associates will be the landscape architect for this next piece. Just to briefly touch a little bit on the history of how we got from then to now, this permit actually dates back to two thousand seven, when it was originally issued by this board, the comprehensive permit for three hundred and eighty-two units, of which ninety-six would be affordable. In two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen, we came back to the board, and we, we advanced, we established Phase One of the, of the project. And when we broke down into the sub-phases, and we permitted Phase One A, which consisted of fifty-two units and just over fourteen thousand square feet of commercial space. In January of two thousand sixteen, we got the regulatory approval from, from Mass Housing for Phase One A, and we commenced construction. As of this point in time, we've built four of the eight buildings. There are thirty-two units, of which eight are affordable, and a little over eight thousand square feet of commercial space. And now we're back. It's spring of twenty twenty-two, we're now in summer of twenty twenty-two, and we've gone back and we've re-engaged, and we've, we've teamed up with Northland Residential, with Union Studio, and the other members to get back to the planning work to figure out how to advance the rest of the Phase One area. The highlighted area shown on this plan above is the Phase One area that was established in two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen. If you go back to the original permitting, it was, it was originally called the Jobs Neighborhood, but we broke it into the phasing. And this is a Google Earth image showing the current condition of, of the, of the site. You can see that four of the buildings are built, and instead of just leaving one section that was undeveloped, we, in that state, we ended up putting in a dog park there. One of the comments we'd received from the community was that a dog park would be something nice to have, and so we, we put one in just as a, as an interim step to get to the next part. This plan might be familiar to some of you. This is the plan that was included in the civil set with our, with our Phase One and Phase One A process. This is the area that was identified as Phase One. And the plan showed a hundred and seventy-nine residential units and about fourteen thousand, I'm sorry, and, and the commercial space was, was unidentified except for Phase One A. In the Phase One process, we broke it down into sub-phases for our own sort of internal purposes. We were somewhat limited as far as our, our bandwidth was concerned, and we needed to break it into the sub-phases in order to advance things. And this was the plan that showed how we were originally going to approach Phase One. We were going to break it down into four sub-phases. Phase One A was going to be fifty-two units, One B, One C, and One D were going to be the remainder of the hundred and twenty-seven units to take us to the one seventy-nine. Along those same lines, but in a, in a different way to approach it now, in addition to Phase One A, rather than looking at things as, as sub-phases per se, we're now breaking down and looking at things in blocks. Because we have a, a team with some, a little bit more experience, a little bit more bandwidth, we are hoping to be more efficient in our process now and be able to advance things on a larger scale instead of breaking it down into smaller chunks. So instead of looking at One A, One B, One C, and One D, we take the one seventy-nine of Phase One, and we break it down into blocks. And instead of looking at things as phases, we'll look at things in, in blocks and how to progress from there. And now I'd like to ask Jeremy to come up, and he can get into a little bit more of the detail about how the new compares with the previous.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name's Jeremy Lake with Union Studio Architecture Community Design. We're based in Providence, Rhode Island, and happy to be a part of this project. As Tom mentioned, you know, part of the reason we also shifted to the block is it's just a little easier to understand. The phase lines are a little bit arbitrary. The blocks are a way of thinking about how the units and the parking might balance, and we were asked to sort of look at this plan and sort of take it to the next level. And one thing we did want to do is largely keep the sort of planned infrastructure in place. Some of it's built, the part that isn't built still makes some sense. So our goal wasn't really to reinvent a wheel, it was literally just to sort of evolve the, the plan and to take it a little bit further forward. We did look back at this plan as sort of a starting point or a reference point. You can see on that chart, you know, we looked block by block, we've looked at, on those blocks, what was already approved in Phase One A, and what was the balance of the units that are there. So I just want to point out, the, the yellow highlighted numbers are, again, the key numbers in Phase One A, as permitted, fifty-two units, that's still the same. And the balance of the phase is a hundred and twenty-seven units is what we're planning for, to have a total of a hundred and seventy-nine units. So what's gonna change is really just sort of the configuration of the buildings within the blocks, and we just wanted to share that with you guys so you could see how it's sort of evolving. So this is our proposed plan, so again, if you were to squint your eyes, nothing really changed. The streets are still where the streets were planned, the blocks are still where the blocks were planned, and pointing at the, at least the yellow total numbers, again, still fifty-two units in the eight buildings along Market Street that are Phase One A, and a hundred and twenty-seven units in the balance of the blocks for a total of a hundred and seventy-nine units. What does change are the little sub-numbers between the blocks. And again, that's what we just kind of wanted to walk you through briefly so you could just see how we're, how we're advancing the project and evolving the project. So I, I promise not to belabor this, but we just wanted to show you block by block sort of how we're approaching this. One big thing I should mention, I know Tom was here probably a month ago, and shared the fact that previously it was approved to be a combination of for-sale and rental, and the big, one of the big shifts here is that we're going to entirely rental, at least for these a hundred and twenty-seven units that make up the balance of the site. And so one of the big changes here was just thinking through the unit types and the balance of things like one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, to make sure it made the most sense as a rental project. So on the left, the plan that was submitted prior, yes?
One quick question.
Absolutely.
You, you mentioned you're going from for-sale to rental. I know when Tom was in last time, we were talking about thirty-two units?
Originally, with the Phase One contemplated in two thousand thirteen, out of the hundred and seventy-nine units, thirty-eight were, were identified as for-sale. Now, all one hundred and seventy-nine are identified as rental.
As rental.
Correct.
Thank you.
So again, on the left, that was the plan, as was shared previously, and what I wanted to point out was it was a combination of different unit types. There were some townhouses, there were some small apartment buildings, they ranged everywhere from one-bedroom units up to even, there was a single four-bedroom unit contemplated at the time. And at the time, at least this particular block, which we're calling Block A, had twenty-five units proposed. On the right is how we've sort of evolved the plan. Again, you squint your eyes, it looks very similar. We still have that green space out on Jobs Fishing. The parking is still primarily in the back of the units. The units are still lining the edges of the block. But the building types themselves, we've sort of just conceptually taken a step forward to try to understand how they might work. There's more sort of studios and ones, and even maybe two bedrooms than there were previously. And as a result, we actually have thirty units on this block instead of twenty-five units on this block. And you'll see across the board when we go block by block, that's what changes, is numbers go up a little, down a little. Again, the grand total, our works out. And we've conceptually worked through how the parking would work to make sure that we're achieving the, the required parking for, for the, the total area. I will also point out, just for what it's worth, if you look on our little colored blocks, all of those little numbers are trying to give you a clue as to what sort of units are gonna go where. Let's see if a cursor works, yeah. So if you look at one of these yellow buildings up in the top right corner, the two slash two is to suggest that on the first floor, there's a two-bedroom unit, and on the second floor, there's a two-bedroom unit on that half of the building. That's a shared central stair. On the other side of the building, there's a one-bedroom unit on the first floor and a one-bedroom unit on the second floor. So that's a little four-unit building with a little shared stair in the middle, and two units on either side on two floors. So if it's a yellowish-colored building, it's meant to suggest it's two stories. The ones that are orange out on, on Jobs Fishing, you can see there's three numbers per side. The intention there is to do a two-and-a-half-story building for those. So the two-two-one means to suggest a two on the first floor, a two-bedroom on the second floor. But on the third floor, we are going to treat that as a true half-story, so we're only doing a one-bedroom unit so that we can, you know, start to chip away at the corners and the eaves, create the cable, the gables, the dormers. So what'll be nice is even if it's a two or a two-and-a-half, it should have comparable eve lines, et cetera. It's just that some of the buildings will have dormers to allow for those additional units on the upper floor. So those, again, two units per floor, but now on three floors, again, with the notion of the central shared stair. Yes, sir?
I'm looking at forty-three spaces shown, thirty-nine surface, four garage. Tell me about that garage. Does that change?
Actually, no. In the previous plans, there were garages proposed, so you can see some of these structures through here. So in this case, these were garages behind what I think were townhouses in that scheme. We still have a handful of garages, not as many as the previous plan did, but they're a nice strategy for sort of holding the edge and sort of minimizing the gaps, looking into some of the parking areas. And it was also an opportunity for us to have a handful of units as a rental that have a garage, which isn't necessarily something you find.
It sounds like a high garage.
Just, like a residential, like you'd think you'd expect to find in a house. That's just a two-car garage attached to the back of this two-and-a-half-story structure that provides two parking spaces just for that unit. Certainly. So again, I, I'd be careful not to get into too many weeds here going through block by block, but in Block B, this is the first block where you can see there is a building, a Phase One A building already built, this building number forty. So again, there were eight units there previously, of course, there are still eight units there now. So it really was the balance of the block that we were looking at, contemplating how we might build that out. We were also looking for opportunities, like in this block, if you go out there, there's a good sort of six to eight feet of grade change dropping down behind in this block. So we realized there was an opportunity to potentially tuck some garages in what would almost be like a walkout basement condition under there. So again, we have a couple of units here that have the potential for garages, but again, that's the exception to the rule. Most of the units park on the street. So again, this, this, this previous scheme contemplated twenty-one units, in our scheme, we're up to twenty-four units. So we've picked up a few units in this block as well. This is Block C, so Market Street is here, so this is the sort of continuation of the mixed-use main street that runs through Mashpee Commons. Building forty-two and forty-four are already built. Forty-six would be one of the future buildings coming online. But again, twenty-two, two units were contemplated, we continue to carry the twenty-two units. And so it's really just about how we fill out the rest of the block with the different types that we're contemplating. Here, we do have a pair, these are townhouse units, so typically, we were doing these sort of walk-up little four- and six-unit buildings. We do have a handful of locations just because of the tightness of the footprints, that we just did some simple duplex units. This block, forty-seven units previously, now we're down to forty-four. So again, you can see how some blocks go up, some blocks go down, overall count stays the same. Directly across the street, similar story, a couple Phase One A buildings on Market Street as planned, and we just looked at how the rest of the block might play out. Pretty similar number of units in this block. One of the biggest changes is this, which we're calling Block E, this backs up to one of the larger parking lot areas. Currently, there's one or two little maintenance buildings here. Building forty-one is built. The original plan sort of contemplated a series of units where, again, you could tuck in maybe parking underneath of the building and enter the building from the front. But as we looked more closely at the site grades out there, at this end of the site, you're getting up to more like fifteen to twenty feet of grade change between the parking lot and the building in front. So you're in this awkward condition where you don't almost have a garage two levels below where the front door was coming in. And it would take a lot of creativity, which we're, we're always up for a challenge, but we realized that was a, a difficult thing to do, especially with the rental types being conceived. We thought would actually be nice would be to actually preserve some of the trees that are in this area as sort of a buffer between what is really the larger parking area and the residential community. I do imagine we will ultimately program this with some open space, maybe this is where a dark dog park goes, something along those lines. Maybe we provide a little overlook, because you get a kind of a nice commanding view down over on the existing Mashpee Commons area. So we may still incorporate some open space elements in here, but the big-picture thing here is that whereas nineteen were previously conceived, we're only suggesting the eight that are there currently. So again, we were making up for these units in all of the other blocks. Yes, sir?
Top right, it says the movement spaces shown. That parking area behind you, to get an idea, is that the parking area behind Siena?
The eleven spaces that are referenced on this plan are the eleven spaces.
I'm just talking about that.
But he's just saying, where, where are we in the plan?
Yeah, so that, if you go north on that plan, you will run into the movie theater and Siena. Those eleven spaces are in the lot.
Just coming back to show you a little more context. So that, that's the, that's the theater where it curves around.
Got it.
Panera's right here.
Okay.
And these, these are, these are some of the newer construction, if you've been out there, these are the ones that have more recently gone up, some of these into here, so. Sure thing. And then last but not least, probably the block where we, other than that one, where we sort of retreated, this is the other one where we made some more, some additional changes. When, when we looked at this block, we just identified that this was a pretty long dead end for a parking area without being able to come back out. It's not to say that it couldn't have worked, but we thought there was maybe an opportunity to actually let that alley sort of come back out again, effectively creating two smaller blocks with this little courtyard space between these buildings here. And so again, thirty previously, we're showing thirty-five in this case. There, there's also a fair amount of grade change here. We have another walkout condition, so actually, this particular building will be a unique condition where it's two-and-a-half stories from the back, but we might have the ability to tuck one more unit in this lower corner and have it, have direct access out to Jobs Fishing. So again, all in, just as a reminder, the same fifty-two units permitted in Phase One A would continue to be in Phase One A. The hundred and twenty-seven units planned for the, the rest of the site, which again, previously were referred to as Phases One B, C, and D, we're now just kind of calling these collectively blocks. But again, the counts are in align with what we've been talking about, what was established. So again, we, we're just sort of evolving the plan, we just wanted to kind of bring you guys along for the rides, that we weren't sort of six steps further down the road the next time we saw you. And for what it's worth, to the degree you're interested, you know, you may have noticed that there were, there are common building types that we're sort of utilizing more than once, right? Every building out here isn't a unique thing. Yes, sir?
Could you back, go back to the last slide?
I can.
Currently, there's only one street coming up, I believe it's Market, correct?
Correct.
To Jobs Fishing?
Correct.
It's right here.
Are there going to be other streets coming up?
Eventually, Benefit Street and Common Street will both connect to Jobs Fishing Road as well. Benefit Street, yeah, right where Jeremy's cursor is pointing, Benefit Street is, is contemplated there, and Common Street is parallel to Market Street, and that, that road is designed to run just to the east side of the Village Common, connecting back to the library on, on Steeple Street.
Was that in the initial plan?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? It's anticipated that Jobs Fishing will be the principal entree and exit for those that are residential in there, as opposed to the rest of the commons, is that correct?
Well, the interesting thing about how this all works is, is once we start to build the network of streets, there's, there's not actually one road that people will have to use anymore. Part of the benefit about what we're doing here is you provide alternate routes depending on which one is the easiest one for people to get in and out. So Market Street and Steeple Street are, right now, the, the streets that run through the heart of Mashpee Commons, but once we build things such as Benefit Street, Common Street, once Fountain Street is continued up to Jobs Fishing Road, there are alternate routes.
But if you look at it, if you're coming one fifty-one towards the Rotary.
Mm-hmm.
I know there's a lot of talk about the Rotary, and Rotary is, is there and will be there, but if you're in that area, you don't go to the Rotary, you take Jobs Fishing. If you want to bypass it, you can continue down, go up by, by Roach Brothers and come into the Rotary from another direction. So there are going to be alternative.
Correct.
Entries into the Rotary.
Correct. that run into the Rotary and what caused the backup.
So it's not anticipated that people who live in, in the area will necessarily have to go through Mashpee Commons to get to where they live? They'll go...
Correct.
...for those.
The theory behind what we're doing is that the people that live in Mashpee Commons don't necessarily need to use their car as much as people that live outside anyway. So that, that's the, that's the theory behind it. But yes, if they do leave, there are alternate routes for them to get in that avoid the Rotary.
Can I ask one other question? The, the twenty-five percent affordable, is it anticipated that as the building is going on, you're not going to wait till the end to do the twenty-five percent affordable? That will be part of the process as you go along?
Correct. Our permit is actually structured such that for every forty-one market rate units that are built, you have to demonstrate that thirteen affordable units are also built, which prevents us from getting to a point where we build two-hundred-and-ninety market rate units and then get to the end and say, okay, here's the affordable. We actually structure it in so that the affordable is built incrementally as the project goes along. So I, I think that's one of the important things to talk about here, is that even though we're, we're referring to these as blocks, the phasing, the phasing per the comp permit stays in place.
And that, that's always been the plan?
Correct. That has always been the plan.
So again, just for what it's worth, this is the last thing, just real quick. Again, we, we do have repeated building types in here, but one thing we did want to stress is that, you know, at the moment, we contemplate at least seven different building types in any case to comprise the community, or, or at least the areas outside of the Phase One A, which are also their own, each their own building. But as contemplated, you know, it's typical that they're used maybe four times, or six times, or two times. There's no one building that's used all the way through this. So we think we're going to be able to build in a reasonable level of efficiency, but still have a lot of variety, especially when we layer in, you know, architectural details, colors, things along those lines. So, do you want to finish with this?
This slide really starts to lay out kind of the next steps in the process. And where we are now is we're, we're sort of kicking this off. Our, our team has been working diligently on getting things prepared to, to come here, and the next step is to start taking it to the next level where the formal set of plans is, is established. Now, fortunately for all of us, Horsley Witten and Brian Kucher are, are still involved, and so it's, it's a, it's just an evolution of the plan that he already started, taking account things like the roof square footage may have changed and, and calculating to make sure that the stormwater is still, the stormwater retention and stormwater infrastructure is still sufficient for the plan, making sure that the parking aligns with the units. Horsley Witten is working on that. Union Studio will start to work on things like the, the building elevations and the floor plans to start to demonstrate to the board how, even though there are seven different building types, it's not going to look like just seven buildings, it will look each individually unique. And we anticipate that over the next few months, the next couple of months, we, we will work on getting those plans ready, where we would be ready to come back to the board sometime in, in September or October with that refined set of plans that you would be able to look at and say, yes, this is, this is what we can expect from the phase. To that end, we believe that there are some intermediate steps that would be beneficial to that process, such as having interview, having interaction with whoever the board chooses as the town's consulting, the consulting engineer, similar to the process we went through with Charlie Rowley last time, where he was able to review the documentation that, that Horsley Witten was putting together to confirm to the board that, yes, we do in fact meet the requirements of the permit. There's also some steps with things like the water district and the fire department to make sure that we still have all the turning radius that we need and, and things such as that. And I'm not sure who this board plans to use for a consulting engineer, but I think that's one of the things that, you know, we would like to start to get a sense of so that we can start to have some contact with whoever that individual might be. Again, hoping to come back to this board in September, October, to, to get approval and, and move on to the mass housing process. And assuming that all of the dominoes fall the way that we would like them to fall, we would love to be ready to be breaking ground in December.
Okay. Jim?
I'm reading some of the financial news. People are buying up residential units and, and big corporations, and they're renting them out. Do you have any plans to, later on, if the market changes, to make condos, some condos and those?
That hasn't been part of the discussion. We, we read the same stories, that rental units are, are crucially needed right now, and the plan is to keep them as rental. I don't think that, that it would be something that would be in, in our conversation for a while.
Okay, thank you. Excellent. Appreciate it. So, so we'll get, I guess you need information about who's going to represent the town, the governing engineer?
Correct. I think that's probably the biggest piece for us right now, is, is who do we send Brian Kucher to, to review things? And, and just to make sure that when we do come back to the board, that it's a vetted document that you can say, yes, this is, this, this is...
Have we straightened that out yet, or not yet?
I think especially in this case, there's so much sort of history and layers and things that have come prior, so it's not your sort of typical starting from scratch, you know? There's a lot to it. That's why we just want to make sure there's plenty of time to coordinate.
We honestly need, as you said, the water department and the fire department.
We, we'll handle that. You know, we have a, we have a very good relationship with both departments from the other things that we've done, so, so we'll, we'll reach out to those.
And police, I would assume?
Correct.
And DPW?
Because this is all, these are all private roads in here, DPW doesn't have much involvement with this. We aren't, we aren't projecting, we aren't proposing any curb cuts on any town-owned roads.
How about, no curb cuts on the new roads you're going to put out to Jobs Fishing?
Jobs Fishing Road, Jobs Fishing Road is a private road.
Okay.
And actually, one of the curb cuts already exists. When we built Phase One A, the end of Benefit Street, where it intersects with Jobs Fishing Road, was built because that was a location for a fire hydrant, and it was a location for a continuation of the parking lot in Block, what is now Block D. So we built that section already.
Got it. Is the Plan Review Committee part of the process that you got through?
No, the process that was established in two thousand and seven was that as long